We call the March twenty-sixth, planning his own board meeting to order. With the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Velazquez, if you will, call the, call the roll for us.
Kimberly Jackson.
Present.
Brian Colton.
Present.
Julius Wiggum.
President.
Maureen Davis.
Present.
Renee James.
Sharon Bruce.
Present.
Edward Canuti.
Sheriff, present.
Try to take my calling.
Here.
Thomas, present.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, Mr. Gaggen?
Yes, good afternoon, Jeff Gaggen, planning his own administrator. Just wanted to make note that a current project list was passed out to the board members tonight. There's also a copy available in the public binder in the back of chambers. Additionally, the third to last page, which is an email from our city engineer, was added. Just saying that there's no additional comments from our engineering department on the Marina Fuel Building. That's it.
Thank you, and members in public, I've just been circulated a notice that Ms. James will not be in attendance tonight for the record. Members, any, I'm sorry, any disclosure by members? Any disclosure by members hearing none? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? As per it.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Mrs. Davis, seconded by Mr. Canuti. Hearing no objections? Show the agenda adopted. Approval of minutes, is there a motion for February twelfth?
Mr. Chair, just a comment before we go to the motion on the minutes.
Mr. Canuti?
Uh, yeah, it seems like there was a spirited debate on parts of the minutes last, the last month. Unfortunately, I had to be out of town for that meeting. But I had, just wanted for the record, say I've got some comments and questions about that, but they really don't relate to approval or disapproval of the minutes. So I will hold those until board discussion.
Anything else from any other members regarding the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion? Is there?
Moved to approve?
Properly moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs., Mr. Canuti, and it's been seconded by Mrs. Brooks. Is there any objection to the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, show those minutes adopted. Unfinished business, unfinished business, there isn't any. Down to new business, Mr. Gaggen.
Yes, once again, Jeff Gaggen, planning his own administrator. The new business tonight, we have two items. The first item, letter A, is proposal by the City of Riviera Beach requesting review of plans for a one-story, nine-hundred-and-forty-square-foot Marina Fuel Building and Retail Store within the city's municipal Marina docks, located at two-hundred East Thirteenth Street on the east side of Avenue C. And being that this is a city project, this is submitted to the board for the board's information, so technically the motion is necessary to move forward to City Council. However, we're here tonight to discuss any, any questions the board have, receive any public comments, and that information will be transmitted to City Council if the board chooses to make a motion to approve the item or just a motion of support, then that's also acceptable.
While we're waiting, Mrs., Mr. Gaggen, Mrs. Davis, you recognize what comment?
How far from US One is this? How far off the street?
Just as a point of order before I respond to that question, being that Mrs. James is absent tonight, we'd like to provide, Ms. Jackson, your closing remarks.
Ms. Jackson, you have closing remarks.
So in response to Ms. Davis's question, this location map is also included in your packet after the staff report. This is US One running north and south. This is Thirteenth Street running into the city Marina. This is the Marina property itself, and these lines indicate the docks and different westslips out in the docks. So this is new dock renovation, and the location of the fuel building itself is out on the docks structure itself as a platform that currently exists. So the building is, I don't have the exact distance, let me see if I have a scale on here. It's about a thousand feet from US One.
It's visible, it's visible from US One, right?
Um, I, I would not think it's visible. There are different structures, developments, buildings in place along US One that would block the view from this, this building itself.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll go through the staff report quickly. So again, this request is for a nine-hundred-and-forty-square-foot Marina Fuel Building and Retail Store. It's located on the existing docks, on Dock D. Historically, there was a ship store of sorts located on the docks, and in association with the Marina redevelopment and the new dock infrastructure, the old building was demolished, and this new building is set to replace that. So it will function as the main hub for purchasing fuel. Most of the retail sale component will be from boatgoers, so people that want to pick up supplies when they already have the water, as well as fuel their boats. So as far as zoning is concerned, it's somewhat unusual, being that it's not an actual parcel. However, it's located next to an area that has a downtown, downtown marine zoning district with a future land use of working waterfront. So again, being that the previous building was located in a similar location, it really isn't as much of a new proposal as, as is renovation of existing structure. As we just saw from the existing location map, to the north, south, and east, there are all intercoastal waterway, and to the west, Marina uplands, Cracker Boy Boat Works, as well as Biscayne Park to the north. Inside the structure, there really is a minor retail component, so it'll be a few display racks. Bathroom facility will be available on site as well. Within the dock structure that currently exists, our fuel line's presence, the infrastructure necessary for the building is already in existence. So this was anticipated long in advance, being that that structure existed previously, and it's a main component of the Marina and their operations.
Is this the only fueling station?
This is the, the only fueling station within the city Marina, yes. And the majority of the equipment associated with, with the facilities located on the mainland, however, the infrastructure extends out onto the dock itself in order to facilitate that boat fueling.
So when the fueling station, who fuel, how does the fueling station get fueled? Through the, from the waterway or the?
Um, the, the fueling station itself, there is a large tank on the mainland, and there's a pipe system that goes out to the actual facility in the dock. So similarly to a gas station receiving fuel, a tanker truck will provide fuel to that main supply area, and then it's, it's piped out to the dock itself.
Chair.
Mrs. Jackson.
Um, is there going to be a time that is open? Is it twenty-four hours or doing business hours?
I will have to refer to our Marina Director, who's present with us tonight, Mr. Eggley. I'm not a hundred percent sure on hours of operation.
Good evening, Board, Ed Lee, Marina Director. Our hours at this point are five, or four, I don't even know our hours, to be honest. It's been a long devin' into boat chill. Seven-thirty in the morning till five-thirty at night. On rare occasions, we may get what we call a late fueler, which will come in just before closing, and, and we may end up finishing the fueling a little bit after closing. But in general, our hours will be from seven-thirty in the morning, five-thirty in the afternoon.
Is that Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday?
Seven days a week.
Seven days, okay, thank you.
Mr. Colton, you recognize?
Contingency plan, as far as the fuel, and it being boats that pulls up to it? What's, is there contingency plan for leakage or spill, or what's in place for that? How do you handle it? Or how would it be handled? If that does happen?
Yeah, the, the current proposal would meet any existing DEP regulations. I'm guessing there's a procedure set forth by the DEP that would have to be followed if it was a substantial spill. I believe there's a reporting process that's associated with that as well.
And do we know for sure, as the Marina Director can tell us, how that will be handled?
Well, there's, Ed Lee again. There's two different ways of doing that. One, you talk about the, the system itself, which is approved by DEP and DRM. It's all a double-wall alarm system. So all the piping, all the pumping, all that is alarmed and doubled walls. So there's, there's redundancy after redundancy to keep fuel from dropping into water. The other fuel spill you may have would be an overflow from a boat itself. In that case, we have, at the fuel dock, we have two response kits, which contain booms and absorber material and so forth that we could use for a small spill. If it became a larger spill somehow, the boat's tank split or something like that. We have a contract with SeaSpill, which is an affiliate of Cito, which responds to larger spills. And all of that courses reported to the Coast Guard and so forth.
What's the response time for them, if it, something like that does happen?
Well, last time we had to call them out, they were there within, I think it was about fifteen minutes, maybe twenty minutes. Pretty quick. We have enough, we have enough material on site to contain the spill for a fair amount of time. So I'm not concerned that, that it would get away from us or anything like that before they got on site.
So there's someone already placed setup just in case something like that happens?
Well, we have the material, and the, and the staff is trained on how to deploy booms and absorber material and stuff, and I've got a little experience as, I had twenty-four years in the Coast Guard, so I've cleaned up more than one, then I care to think about. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Lee, I think if, perhaps you can grab a seat in front of a microphone? Because I, I, it seems that members are going to ask questions that might be specific to the Marina operations or the tank itself.
Yeah, if, I mean, just to finish the, the last few items in the staff report to get them in, just for the record.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Davis.
So, which was briefly talked about during the spill scenario, the proposed building meets Department of Marinerment's protection, building, and flood plan code as well. And as we discussed previously, the information is being provided for informational purposes. However, if the board wishes to provide a motion of support, that would be a positive thing for the project.
On that note, Jeff, I have a question. You said if the board decides to provide support through motion, this doesn't have to go through in front of City Council, does it?
It'll go to City Council, yes.
It does?
Yes.
Because, you know, I was a little concerned, because it just said review of plan, so I didn't know that this was something customary. It wasn't a site plan application or special exception application?
Yeah, that's what the code asks for. Let me see if I wrote down that section.
Certainly not to undermine you, I just thought maybe it was just for information, informational purposes and for just board consideration and perhaps any record basis. But I didn't know that it was a requirement. And if that is in fact the case, my next question would be, if it's voted unfavorably, for whatever reason, not to think that it will be, does that then halt the construction of this fuel facility?
Well, if there was a substantial comment or a public outcry, and there seemed to be something that should stop the project, and that could happen, as it's scheduled right now, it will proceed forward to City Council barring that. However, there isn't a set schedule, it's already in place currently. So if, for some reason, there was significant comments, then it, it could wait for, you know, another plan. It's only board meeting or whatever would require, whatever would require the item to move forward. But the item itself doesn't have to be approved in the manner of true site plans and then all, you know, being that this is a city project.
Sure. And, and no need to look, there was another question, remember?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Mr. Canuti?
Yeah, for Mr. Lee. What is, what is the timetable to start it and finish it, once it's approved?
Once we get the RFP out on the street, and that goes back to City Council, the, the construction time will be somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty days. I would love to have this done by the end of the year or nearer there, because I'm not pumping fuel at the moment, and I wouldn't really like to do that. So, Diane, did I catch everything you asked?
Yeah, a question, are you going to have high-speed pumps?
Yes, sir, we have, we have high-speed diesel pumps on the, on the two-inch line. We also have what they call a jack pump for the larger vessels that I can actually, I can actually connect that into a tanker and go directly into a larger hundred footer, hundred twenty footer.
Okay. When I was down there today, I noticed that surrounding that are a couple mega yachts and the charter boat, Majestic Princess. How much space is going to be allocated on that corner for public fueling?
We've got, I think, sixty foot on the south side is what we use, and forty foot on the, on the east side, or forty to fifty foot on the east side. I also have on the inside fueling areas too, that I can reach with a hose. So like on the inside of that square, I could have a smaller boat pull up on either one of those sides too. So that's another probably, probably forty and sixty, probably another hundred feet of, of space on the inside of the dock.
So they would have to navigate the complete Marina to get into that corner?
Yeah, if I'm full on the outside, then they'd have to come on the inside.
Okay.
And some of the smaller boats may want to do that on a breezy day or something like that, so it works out pretty good.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Chair.
Mrs. Jackson.
Um, Mr. Lee, will the city be managing this, or is it going to be an independent contractor managing it?
Managing the construction of the building?
No, the actual fueling station.
Uh, as it stands right now, the city run, operates the Marina. There's probably an RFP on the street to go to third-party management, but as it stands right now, it's in a city operation.
So in the future, it may be under independent management?
That's correct, it may be a third party, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Colton, you recognize?
The tank, where you, the storage tank, is it completely new, or is it an existing tank?
So those tanks were put in in two thousand, I want to say two thousand ten or two thousand eleven. There was a mandate by DEP that all single-wall tanks be renewed by that time. The city did that project, which was roughly a six-hundred-thousand-dollar project, to put in new tanks, new lines, new dispensers. So they're, they're used. They were pulled out of the ground, obviously emptied, relocated to where the upland construction needed them to be. They've been recertified and re-approved by DEP. So they're in essence a, a new tank.
New refurbished tank, how about the lines that go through?
Um, they all are tested and recertified, yeah, everything's tested and recertified. You can't run fuel through any line that hasn't been certified by DEP, Glasgow in this case. Thank you.
Any other members? Hearing none, is there one to the presentation, Mr. Gaggen?
Uh, no, just, just the color renderings, which are included on the basis for review, as well as on the screen for public view.
Any other members wishing to comment or ask questions before we call a question? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve this as, this project as submitted.
It's been moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Davis, seconded by Mr. Canuti. Last time for comments or questions. Mr. Velazquez, if you'll call the roll.
President Hamilton?
Yes.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Maureen Davis?
Yes.
Sharon Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Canuti?
Yes.
Try to take my calling?
Yes.
Any more supporting motion approved?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Board, we appreciate your support.
New business, letter B. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending chapter thirty-one of the city's code ordinances, zoning, article four, non-conform uses, section thirty-one dash seventy-nine, restorations, amending the manner in which restoration value is calculated and how building restorations are permitted within the city, providing for conflicts, severability, and purification, providing an effective date. So to give you a brief history on this project, this is a city-initiated code amendment, and it came about due to the code amendment process associated with the setbacks on singer items and within specific zoning districts in the city. And there was, there was public comments during previous planning and zoning board meetings and the first reading of the ordinance in City Council, questioning what would currently happen in the case of natural disaster, catastrophe, a fire, as far as a property owner being able to rebuild an existing building. So staff went back and looked at the existing zoning code. The section that we're discussing here was actually codified back in nineteen fifty-seven, so it's part of the original city code. And in staff's opinion, it needs to be revisited in order to allow property owners to renovate their buildings, restore their buildings in the event of a catastrophe. So this code section would apply to the entire city, to any zoning district within the city. Under the staff analysis section, which, let me pull it up on the screen as well. And a portion of this I just briefly mentioned in my opening commentary, but again, this is an old section of the code. City staffs that, city staff believes that amending this section of the code is beneficial to everyone involved. With the current code, the way it's written, if there were to be a natural disaster, if there were to be catastrophe, there would be some major impacts to the existing property owners, as far as what they would be able to build and what they'd be able to restore in accordance with the existing code itself. So what the existing code restricts property owners to is one-hundred percent of the appraised value. So if it's a newer building, or if construction costs are during a boom time, and construction costs are elevated, it could hinder a property owner as far as what they'd be able to rebuild. If there's an existing structure that is older, and the property owner wants to come in and really upgrade the structure after a natural disaster or catastrophe, the existing code section would limit that as well. So flipping to the last page in the packet tonight, that shows in a striked through and underlined format what's proposed to be deleted and added. The existing section, which is thirty-one dash seventy-nine, restorations, that's about midway down the page, and that's entirely stricken through. There are some components that are transferred over to the amended language. However, because it was rewritten, and it's, it's being proposed in a slightly different format, it was easier just to delete the existing section and provide brand-new language, just for clarity. And just for the record, I will quickly read what the previous restoration section stated. Previously it read, "Nothing in this chapter shall be taken to prevent the restoration of a building destroyed to the extent of not more than one-hundred percent of its assessed value by fire, explosion, or other casualty, or act of God, or the public enemy, nor the continued occupancy or use of such building or part thereof which existed at the time of such partial destruction." So again, that would limit restorations after a natural disaster to one-hundred percent of the assessed value. The language that's being proposed, it reads, "Nothing in this chapter shall be taken to prevent the restoration of a lawfully permitted constructed building and any accessory structures, including but not limited to garages, swimming pools, and decks, which all may be reconstructed with a layout and elevation as they existed prior to damage or destruction by fire, explosion, natural disaster, acts of God, or other casualty, as long as the following conditions are satisfied." There are three conditions. Condition number one reads, "In order to be eligible to receive building permit approval for building restorations pursuant to the section, a complete building permit application for restorations must be submitted to the city within eighteen months of the date on which the qualifying event occurred." Number two reads, "All approved restoration construction must be completed and pass city inspection within three years from the date the first building permit was issued, approving said restoration construction." Number three, "All restorations shall comply with current building and fire codes at the time of reconstruction." And also a letter B, "Nothing in this chapter shall be taken to prevent the continued occupancy or use of such building or part thereof which existed at the time of such damage or destruction unless deemed structurally unsafe by the city's building official." So we can open up to comments at this time.
Members, any questions? Mrs. Davis?
Um, I guess I'm just not clear. So if you have a home, you have a home, part of it is destroyed, then, so if you have the three rooms of that house that's destroyed, and you have to restore it, you restore it, does that mean the entire house has to be brought up to code where it's electrical plumbing, or that sort of? where it's electrical plumbing, or that sort of thing, is that what it says?
It would depend on the extent of the damage in that situation. So this code section is rather narrow as far as it has to be triggered by a natural disaster, fire, an event that seems to be out of the control of the resident or property owner. If restoration does occur, it does need to meet existing building codes and fire codes. Because of that, if there was an older structure, there could be an issue as far as being able to come up to current code and also meeting what the existing code says as far as one hundred percent of the assessed value of the structure. So if, let's say, three rooms were destroyed in a single-family house, the extent of damage could far exceed that one hundred percent of the assessed value, and it would leave the property owner in a really bad place.
Well, it wasn't exactly what I meant. So if, so you have the house with, and three rooms are destroyed, do you have to bring, by fire or whatever, water, it could be anything, do you have to bring up to code the remainder of the house that's not damaged?
Again, I think it's governed by the percentage overall of damage, so if you had
Fifty percent?
A four-room house, or let's say it's three rooms of a four-room house, the entire structure would have to be brought up to existing codes.
Were there any percentages, like if your house is more than fifty percent destroyed?
I believe fifty percent is the threshold.
Alright, so is it going to be put into this code?
I think there's a separate section of the code that actually describes it.
It's an affordability code, and it would be fifty percent of a system. So a roofing system, a wall system, that's the threshold. It's a affordability code.
Yeah, you definitely want to come up and, you have volunteers.
My name is Joe Verdon, just to answer your question.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Joe Verdon, I'm a land planner with the law firm Carlson Fields, Jordan, Burt. It would be governed by the Florida Building Code, which is a percentage of the system. So like if your roof, more than fifty percent of your roof is done, then the new roof has to be code. If more than fifty percent of an electrical system is affected, the electrical system has to be brought up to code. The Florida Building Code does require upgrades to be as current as possible when you do have these disasters, just for clarity.
Thank you.
That is in the code.
Just seems like we should have it in ours, maybe it doesn't matter. I guess, it's sort of, it's not that it's deceptive, it's vague. I mean, it doesn't, it's just not specific, maybe it's not supposed to be, I don't know. Is that what I'm saying?
We could add language saying as governed by the Florida Building Code,
Okay.
Something along those lines. So at least there's a reference point within this code section, and that way, let's say, for some reason, somewhere down the road, the building codes change to sixty percent. That would reference the fact that you just have to refer to the other code versus trying to put down a static number that could potentially change every time.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just a moment, Mr. Colton?
Okay, I'm with the last comment, this is vague, and part of what I'm reading here in subsection A, and I just highlighted this little different section, uh, section here, say, "As they existed prior to damage or destruction," so if a building is destroyed or damaged, you're gonna build it back to the existing elevation or the layout, okay? Now, if you build it back to that existing in the six year, ten years ago, how will you be up to code with the new codes? It doesn't describe how to do that. Now, the other thing that came up is that it will refer to the Florida Building Code. There's nothing here that reference, that you need to reference to the Florida Building Code to tie anything in. So me as a layperson who wants to go through, I understand attorney, you can get tied up, or the city can get tied up in minutia over years, where attorneys arguing with the city attorney to say, okay, the Florida codes say, but the City of River Beach codes say, something needs to tie in to between the Florida code and the city, what the city wants to accomplish here. This is vague, and to me, it leaves the city with their pants down if something like that do happen.
You know, I think that we can add that direct reference to the Florida Building Code as far as percent of a structure or system that's destroyed. That's something that would be an issue. And what the intent of letter A is, it is rather vague because it allows a property owner to build back to the configuration that previously existed if they choose to. So it doesn't say that they shall build it back in this manner, it says, it can. Look if I can highlight here, it says, "which all may be reconstructed." So it's an option of the property owner to reconstruct to the previous configuration.
I understand that for part of it, but what it puts the city in a situation. The reason why codes have changed, and the reason why that building may have burned fifty percent, because it's not up to the current standard. So if you build it back to the original standard, you still have a potential where it's not addressing it, this is what I'm saying.
I think there's, there's two different components within this language, so. The first component, which describes, which may be reconstructed with the layout and elevation, that that's really intended to describe the floor plate of the building or where structures are located on a parcel. So the intent of that isn't to say you can build back to previous building codes or previous fire codes. And that's why within number three, it says that all restorations shall comply with the current building and fire codes. So what's attempted to be, to be said in A, is saying if you have a legally non-conforming structure that was built fifty years ago, prior to zoning regulations being put in place that establish setbacks or things of that nature, if a natural disaster occurs or a fire occurs, then you can rebuild your house or building in the same exact footprint as it existed when it was originally built fifty years ago.
I have one more.
Building fifty years ago, and if a building is destroyed fifty years ago and starting from building the footing, for example, may have been twelve inches. Currently, it's eighteen inches. Now, what happens in that instance where you have to start from the footing where the codes aren't up to current standard? What happens then?
So you would be able to renovate the existing footing to current building and fire codes, but you could renovate it in its existing location. So if you had, let's say you had one side of your house, let's say the east side of the property was built fifty years ago, prior to zoning regulation, and any sort of side setback being in place, and thirty years after the structure was built, zoning regulation came into effect saying that, you know, you have to have at least seven feet between the property line and the building itself. And let's say there's only five feet. So what this would allow to occur, it would allow the property owner to rebuild within the five feet of the property line, if there was a natural disaster or fire that caused destruction of the building.
I'm not referring to setbacks, I'm referring to the, the footing itself. Setbacks and the foot, it's not the setbacks I'm referring to, I'm referring to the footing. Fifty years ago, footing width is twelve inches, now it's eighteen, I'm just saying. That's what I'm referring to, not the setback.
Okay, the reconstruction would have to adhere to the most recent building codes and fire codes.
That means you'd have to dig the footing out or to expand it or something?
Yeah, it would depend on the situation, it could be something that, you know, there's an engineer fix for it. It could be a complete, you know, if it's more economically effective to
Start from scratch?
Start from scratch, that's an option that the property owner would have as well.
So what?
What determines starting from scratch with a footing if needs be? What, what is the, what is the threshold to say, based on that building destruction, what's here states or threshold that's placed and right in here to say, now that has to start from scratch?
I see, and I think that's where the reference to the Florida Building Code is important. I think that's what we'll, we'll add language to this thing, that we'll refer to the Florida Building Code.
Okay.
And if it's fifty percent or if that changes over time, we'll just reference that code. So that way it ties together.
Okay.
I believe I heard Mr. Hamilton next.
Thank you, Chair. If a property owner is not able or does not complete within the timeframe, what's the consequences of it?
Well, there are certain timeframes established within the ordinance. If the property owner did not follow the processes outlined as far as submitting a permit within the allotted timeframe, if they don't finish the construction within the allotted timeframe, they would basically lose the ability to do so. So if it, if it took a property owner more than eighteen months after the date of whatever natural disaster or qualifying event occurred, then they would lose the ability to build within an established setback, let's say, or if that situation occurred.
So you're saying that a natural disaster come about, which this referred to, and unfortunately, the person may not have insurance, and maybe have ninety-nine, eighty percent loss. And some of them refer to a structure being built approximately fifty years ago. So the cost has significantly increased, the person has lived in that structure for fifty years. So that person is probably minimum fifty years old, or older, I'll add twenty to that, but that's an estimate. Where limited or fixed income, eighty percent of the structure he's living into, if allowed, twenty percent, because I know electricity would be limited, depending upon the structure, et cetera. And it's not that person's desire to lose, he just may not have funds at the time and working on anything possible, and it just takes time. You think the city will work with the individual? Or is there extensions possible, is there for the person working?
I think you've described definitely worst-case scenario, and there's nothing that would prohibit that property owner from rebuilding to existing codes. In current zoning regulations, current building codes, and that would be in the future whenever they're able to. But in the scenario you described, it seems as if it would be a complete loss. The building itself, it seems as if it wouldn't be economically feasible to even repair it. So it may be a complete demolish and rebuild at a later date. So, you know, historically, the city has been more than willing to work with residents. If there's an extreme situation where, you know, it's an elderly resident and there's other circumstances outside their control, or if there were, you know, a true state of emergency described, say in Florida or Palm Beach County, I'm sure that there's potential for flexibility in the future. But what staff want to do is ensure that there were hard and fast timelines within this. So there was a standard that was set at least, and in a very extreme situation, there could be flexibility.
I actually have a couple people, Mrs. Brooks, and then Mrs. Jackson.
Well, my comment was, if you put the language in there applying to Florida Building Code, that takes care of everything, because everything's gonna revert back to the Florida Building Code, regardless of if it's a percentage, if it's even less than fifty percent, you're still gonna have to build back to whatever the standard is. So regardless of setback, the footprint, or whatever, it's, I was just saying, you were saying, Mr. Gackner, that when you say layout, it wasn't specifically that layout or whatever, it's just allowing them to go back and build what they, you know, in that particular area. But just putting the Florida Building Code, because everything falls back to that. So whatever the building code is at that time, regardless, it's gonna fall back and then to address Mr. Hamilton's question about whether the applicant would be able to rebuild. And I'm sure that the city is aware of programs that the county has to, that specifically address those issues with individuals that are not able to build back or don't have the capability, they own their property. So I was just clarifying, but I don't want to be the dead horse.
Mrs. Jackson?
Okay, we're removing the language of one hundred percent of this assessed value. So they actually could build back more than their assessed value, is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct, yes.
So there's no limit on how they could, on how much they could spend to restore the property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Davis, you recognize?
I changed my mind.
Okay, Mr. Canuti?
Just a couple quick questions. I agree with adding the language as governed by the Florida Building Code. I think that clarifies a lot. But what about non-conforming structures? You said something just a little bit ago that kind of confused me a little bit. Non-conforming structures by current standards, and they get destroyed.
Right, in that scenario, the intent of this code is to allow a property owner to rebuild a structure that's considered legally non-conforming because the event would have caused severe damage to the structure and it would have been out of the control of the property owner. So what it would, again, the scenario that I described before, if you had a previously existing home that was built fifty years ago, and it approaches two feet within a setback that was established well after the property was developed, then in the case of a natural disaster or a fire, then the property owner, if they follow these procedures and the conditions are satisfied, they'd be able to rebuild that structure within that five-foot setback.
How does that relate to the situation we just had on Broadway, where there was a car, a used car lot? Now, it's a little different in that that was not used as a used car lot for a couple of years, okay? They came back in and wanted to make it a car lot again. And we didn't allow them because it obviously, you know, expired, the use expired because it was a non-conforming use. So if somebody has a non-conforming use, building gets seventy percent destroyed, and they choose to do nothing with it, does the same rule apply? I mean, at some point in time, it looks like they have eighteen months to file a building permit. If they don't file a building permit, it's over.
Right, it's a little different between the non-conforming structure and non-conforming use. So you can have, we'll use the auto dealer reference, you can have a use that may be considered non-conforming, however, it's in a structure that meets all the code requirements. So if that use ceased to exist for one hundred and eighty days, and this is in a separate section of the code, but if that use ceased to exist for one hundred and eighty days, and the business owner can show proof of, you know, we just, we didn't temporarily close and maintain our business license, we just went away, then that use would disappear, so.
Okay, so in the case of non-conforming, the person has eighteen months to file the building permit, and then three years to build it out.
That's how it's proposed, yes.
Okay, thank you, no other questions?
I have a comment related to the eighteen-month timetable. During this event of a natural, in the event of a natural disaster, one of these events that's noted in the language, should there be a reference point to code enforcement? Because, you know, I think what we all know that we do have code enforcement in the city. Because, you know, I think what we all know that we do have code enforcement in the city. And I would hate that a property is destroyed or, or is impacted by a natural disaster. Should there be a stay on code enforcement? Should we reference something about code enforcement? Because if we're allowing an applicant to obtain a building permit within eighteen months, it would seem a little logical, maybe we can have the conversation that there should be some sort of reference to code enforcement. Should there be a stay of code enforcement? Should there be something that triggers? Because, you know, forbid something was to happen. I don't want a structure that's maybe down the street from my house to stay in that manner for a year and a half. You know, I, yeah, I think there should be some sort of inclusion of some sort of aspect of code enforcement. So we're not looking at something that's just blight and just eyesore for the community. If, if you have any feedback, though.
I, I think that, I don't know whether in this specific session of the code it's appropriate. I know that there are other code sections that would describe the existing code process. What would meet acceptable, you know, property maintenance standards, things of that nature. So if there was a circumstance or a situation that, you know, a property was destroyed and this specific section doesn't really detail what code enforcement should do or if it was a stay. Historically, what I've seen is it, it's almost, not in a case-by-case scenario, however, code enforcement followed the existing ordinance as far as what the property standards are allowed. If the applicant or property owner is actively working on a project and if they can demonstrate that they're working towards this goal of submitting for a building permit within eighteen months, then, you know, typically there, there aren't really any actions taken. However, code enforcement, if they don't have the ability to either cite a property or notify them of different code violations, then you can alter their process as well. So I think that there are existing codes within the city's ordinances that already describe what the process is. So I, I'm just not sure if it would be appropriate to reference them in this code section as well.
And it was just a thought on my part. I just, you know, I, I, I'm sure it's probably cited in some other section of the code in the event of a natural disaster. You know, what, what's the code enforcement position or code compliance? You know, how do we address that? But, you know, it was just something that I brainstormed. Any other members who can make a comment?
Chair.
Mr. Hamilton, you recognize?
A point of clarification. Since the fifty-year term has gone around, uh, infrastructure approximately fifty years ago was built, and I want to say it used the term zero lot line. So maybe right next to a sidewalk or et cetera versus the current setbacks. And it may get destroyed. Does that mean that in the sense of a natural disaster, that structure has to be set back?
The way that the current code is written, it would more than likely require the building, now we're saying substantial devastation, you know, that there's really.
Correct.
Yeah. The building itself, if it was currently legal not performing, and there was a major devastating event, destroy the building, then it would have to meet existing code regulations. So it would have to meet a setback. So what this proposed language does, it, it allows the property owner, if they choose to build up to that zero lot line again during the renovation process. So it, it maintains the ability of the property owner in the case of a natural disaster, if they meet the conditions proposed, that they would be able to rebuild up to that zero lot line.
Mr. Colton, you recognize?
Not to be the dead horse, um, you're referencing Florida code. And the argument came up, why not reference code enforcement because, and I'm just commenting on that last comment as far as code enforcement is concerned. Code enforcement would at some point possibly step in to say, there's a code enforcement on that particular property. Now attorneys looking at attorneys, one attorney would say, well, code enforcement didn't come in time. So there's an argument here to say we're extending. So why not just reference it? Not to say, just to reference the code to a point, to, to say, I, I'm not an attorney, but this references certain section in code enforcement to say when code enforcement, and it, it's referenced certain article, certain subsection to say this is how code enforcement act. Just like how we would reference a certain section of Florida code. I mean, what would be?
I guess the, my opinion on that is there isn't necessarily a statute of limitations as far as when code enforcement would have to take action. So it, you know, if the city can make the point that we only have four code enforcement officers for a random example, and there's many properties throughout the city that have potential violations, and it's taken code enforcement two years to, to go throughout the entire city and cite property owners, then, you know, I think as long as the city's actively pursuing what's, what's described in our code, then there really isn't a timeframe associated with that. Also, I, I don't disagree with the connectivity and what I've seen happen over the past few years. We, we use an online code system where it's a web-based code. And what we've seen happen is there's more and more references within the code where it's just a click to a link and then it'll bring you to the, the appropriate section. So I, I think that's a good idea. I, I don't know if it's a hundred percent appropriate in this case, just because it's a really narrow section of our code. But I am seeing more and more of that occur.
Thank you.
Any other members? Perhaps our board attorney? No?
Uh, no.
We looked at perplexed down there as if you were analyzing it and, you know, I was.
Well, just a, a couple, and, and once again, not to prolong it, I certainly understand the comment about code enforcement. Um, I'm sorry, I certainly understand the comment about code enforcement. However, I think it's, uh, you know, I, I think Jeff is, uh, is correct there. And also another aspect of that is a lot of times you don't want to call out, say like code enforcement in a particular section, because then somebody would use that argument against you in another section and say, well, why didn't you called it out specifically here? Why didn't you address it over here? So therefore, when you have code enforcement in one section of your code, it says, look, this applies to everything. Then you don't have to worry about handling that argument. And the other aspect, I mean, in, in most cases where this is really intended to apply, my understanding, is let's say a hurricane comes along and does a lot of damage. And in most cases, it is setbacks or it's building size or something like that that, that is affected, you know, by the hurricane. And so, uh, before, let's say it was a fifty-year-old building, if you had a hundred percent of assessed value, well, and if you had to rebuild that building in today's current code, you might only be able to build back fifty percent of that building because the cost has escalated so much. So what this does, this allows you to do that. However, what we've also done by adding the timeframes in here is you don't want to have the argument that, let's say a hurricane comes along and knocks down a building, uh, and then fifteen years later, the person comes back and says, okay, I want to go ahead and rebuild it back to what it was. And, and it's kind of hard, you know, with the, with the prior language in the code to try to argue, well, no, you've missed your chance. So that was kind of the intent of also including some of this language in here to try to put uh, kind of a, if you will, a statute of limitations on how long someone has to try to get complete, you know, to come back and where they can make use of this provision. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shutt. The asterisks that's just before, does that indicate the beginning and the end of the chapter?
Yeah, what, what that indicates is there is additional sections above and below.
But that's the end of that section specific for?
Right.
Restorations? And nothing prior?
But yeah, what, what the asterisk indicate, it's just that there's additional sections. So section thirty-one dash seventy-eight is above. Which is separate from this, this code section. And then section thirty-one dash eighty is above.
Okay, so nothing else additional in seventy-nine?
Nothing.
Okay, great. Any other members, questions or comments before we call a question? Hearing now, is there a motion to adopt the language as presented or with conditions?
Uh, I'll move that we adopt the language as written with the addition of the phrase as governed by the Florida Building Code. And the suggestion, it probably fits in section three.
Okay.
It's been moved in this been second. I have a question by Mrs. Davis.
Would you consider adding the word current Florida Building Code? Florida, the current Florida Building Code?
Uh, sure, I mean, well, I, I, well, let me ask you this. I mean, it's not, it's the Florida Building Code, so it's not the current Florida Building Code. It's the current one and future ones.
Still. So no amendment necessary? Any other comments? Last opportunity before we call a question, any comment? Hearing now, Mr. Velasquez, if you will call the role on the adoption of this motion.
Kimball Jackson?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Judith Weigand?
Yes.
Ari Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Shett Brooks?
Yes.
Edward Canooty?
Yes.
Frederick McCollum?
Yes.
Anyone with a volume of this here, please.
Thank you. Item number eight, general discussion. We have no public comments. No correspondence that I know of. Anything, Mr. Gattin?
Other than the, the email from Ms. James, there was no other correspondence provided.
Thank you, Mr. Gattin. Just before planning is on board comments, I want to allow Mr. Canooty to address some of the concerns he mentioned prior. I, before he starts, I, I just want to ask a question about the conditions that when we add conditions or stipulations to motion, how is that then presented to city council at their meeting? Because I think our role is very important, you know. I'm not sure of the time this city here, we got seven thirty-eight. So we've been here an hour now and we spent thirty, I, I would just be generous and say thirty minutes on each item. And I think that's the importance of our board. We spend a lot more time and I think it's our role and due diligence and hashing out or asking these kind of questions when it comes to land use and different projects that go on in the city. How is it then presented to council? Because I know quite frankly, when they have an agenda or something that's really, I guess, a, a lot of information that has to be heard on the council night. You know, I think it's important that, you know, the part that we at least recommend, how is that then presented to council? Is it just a small caveat, you know, in the back of, uh, in the back of, the backup documentation? Or is it stated, well, city council, the planning members, the planning zoning members propose that we approve it with this exception? How is that then articulated to council?
Yeah, typically within the staff report, it describes, is there, there's certain conditions that planning and zoning board recommends. Those are provided in the staff report. Depending on the resolution or ordinance, some, sometimes that's also included within the whereas clauses of the document. But one of the, the biggest, more recent improvements is the fact that we have a court reporting app. So we provide the meeting minutes along with the items to city council. So all of the discussion is provided and it's accessible if anyone wants to see it.
Sure. And, you know, I, I was kind of just taking an analytical look because, you know, I know we made recommendations to the city council and sometimes I'm just curious, do they even understand the magnitude or the significance or some of the spirit of discussions that we have on some of these items? Because, you know, here we, and certainly not, nothing that I've seen today or maybe last meeting, but we'll sit through sometimes, but I know it's been some of those issues where we had one item up on discussion for two hours. And it takes a matter of maybe seven or eight minutes and it's completely went through city council meeting. No reference of any kind of planning and zoning board recommendation. So I was curious about that. Now, one other thing that I've noticed, and I'm not sure if most folks have paid attention, I want to say maybe over the last four and a half, maybe five years, we used to have, well, city council used to have agenda review that was a separate meeting specifically where they would go in and ask questions of staff about specific items that was coming up on the agenda. That doesn't exist anymore. You know, council chose that, to remove that. And I think that's one of the opportunities where, where anybody, at least for me, sometimes it's quite tough for me to divulge into a lot of information in just a week's time, you know, um, how that whole process works. And sometimes, you know, you get the impression when you look at city council meetings or if you're in attendance, they had no idea that that was even discussed at the planning and zoning board meetings or later down the line. Well, I didn't know we approved that. You know, I heard that about one of the planning and zoning board appointments. And what was kind of buried within staff recommendation was that staff recommends approval of this. But it never indicated the underlying causes. Like when one of the board members' appointments, when he was removed, came into question about, I don't ever remember removing this guy off of the planning and zoning board. Well, deep buried within that packet, it says, staff's recommendation was to add these members and remove a member. But they never knew it, you know. So, you know, that's just one of the concerns that I've noticed. So it's just food for thought. It's nothing I think we need to take action on, you know, in my opinion, quite as further discussion unless other members chooses. Uh, Mr. Canooty, you recognize?
Just to add to what, uh, Chair McCoy said, I think, uh, I looked at the agenda for the, uh, city council. I couldn't find the minute, I couldn't get to the minutes. But I saw the agenda for the city council for the coastal, uh, the coastal control line. And in reading the item, okay, it was really not that clear as to that, that it reflected the, uh, everything that the board said and the additional language of eliminating all exceptions. So I guess my question on that is, is that in the backup material that the council gets so that the full flavor of what this board is saying gets to them?
Well, again, in the staff report, I believe that there was specific reference in that item in particular to, um, that commoner condition that the planning and zoning board had. And additionally, we're supplying the council with the verbatim minutes from the court reporter moving forward. So, you know, I, I believe the information's accessible. More so if we ever get direct questions from, actually from the general public, really. It doesn't have to be a council member, but if we get direct questions, uh, we provide answers and responses. So, you know, we, we try to be as proactive as possible. If we do receive individual questions, we respond to them. So I believe the information's available. How people utilize the information is up to them.
Is there, excuse me, is there a way for items that were either passed or failed here when they go to council for us to get staff's comments that are transmitted to council either in hard copy or a link that tells us this is what, we know what we said, but this is what staff is telling city council about this item?
Yes, typically a week prior to every city council meeting, the full packets made available and that will include the staff report as well as the meeting minutes. And there is, uh, I think the city calendar section on our website will lead you to that. What, what staff can do is I can provide you an email if there is items that recently went to planning and zoning board or even historic items that are not going to city council. I can just provide notifications to the planning and zoning board and say that, you know, this item is going to go to council for review. And this is the, the backup information associated with it.
That certainly would be helpful, me, you know, to, to get that, and I think maybe everyone.
I, I concur. I concur. And, and let me start by, well, let me continue by saying this, that's exactly what I was thinking, because what happens is, this project, or I'm sorry, this language, as well as the Marina fueling project, may not go to council next meeting, may not go to following meeting, so there's no way that I can, you know, well, I'm sure there is a way that I can follow it, but there's no way of me knowing when it's going to go to council. And, you know, I try not to bring my comments to the City Council meeting, you know, if it's, you know, I think what we do does get hurried, but I would much rather it flows through, through the way of motion and that sort of thing. But some of these things are very dear and important, and, you know, I think whatever the issue is dignifies me actually being there or necessitates me wanting to say a public comment, I would kind of want to know as opposed to, you know, only finding out after watching Channel eighteen, you know. Maybe our position wasn't explained fully, so I just would like to kind of follow. Interesting enough, I was watching our local city, Channel eighteen, and I did see that the two items that was discussed tonight was advertised on Channel eighteen, and I thought that was very good. That's a step forward in at least allowing, you know, the public to know, you can tell by the number of people that we have here in the office standing room only, so Channel eighteen is really working. Mrs. Davis?
As we're talking about the difficulty of planning and zoning seem, seems to unable to really get the attention of the City Council, it's very difficult to even find planning and zoning meetings and the correct dates and times on the website. And I know on City Events, they advertise other meetings in planning and zoning, it's never advertised, and planning and zoning is the most important committee or commission, whatever you want to call it, in the city. It leads to, good planning and zoning can be the success or the failure of a city, and I think that the residents, obviously residents want to know what's happening in their city, and I think that we should make it more accessible to them. And it's, it doesn't even have the second date that we have a meeting on the website. You have to really hunt for it. And another thing is, I really believe that we should be televised. And I know, we've been talking about this for four years.
Is that a motion, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, it is. I make a motion that we request the City Council to approve our meetings being televised on Channel eighteen.
It's been moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Davis, and it was seconded by Mr. Colton, prior to the roll call, any discussion on that issue? Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, Mr. Velazquez, if you'll call the role on that?
Kimberly Jackson?
No.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiegand?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Edward Canooty?
Uh, no.
Frederick McCray? One is three, uh, four yes, three no. Motion approved.
Our members, any other comments?
Does that mean we have to be here a half hour early for makeup?
Sure.
Uh, I just make my, the comments that I mentioned to you about, about the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hamro.
Okay.
You recognize, Mr. Hamro.
All right. You know, I, I thought it was interesting, and I didn't see any, I was unable to find the actual minutes to the statement that the City Council was suggesting going to an attrish, to attrit members of the board. Uh, I don't know who, uh, so I, I'd be interested to see what council member made that statement. And, you know, to me, if you're going to randomly pick people that are just only limited to your circle, you know, be like a, you know, a team having the first three-round draft picks and say, I can't take the three best players because they all went to FSU, you know? So it, it just seems counterproductive, you know, and it's tantamount to term limits, if you will, and if that's the game, maybe everybody ought to have term limits, so.
Well, a- actually, if I could help you out, Mr.?
Let me, let me just finish him, because I, you know, I, I don't think we need a lot of discussion, I'm just giving you my, since I was unable to be here. Somebody made a comment, maybe we should recall everybody on the City Council, which, So, but I just thought it was interesting, the, the, the volume of, the volume I heard from the whole board on that, about the whole subject, and I think it's kind of reflected in some of the things you said today about the relationship between this board and the City Council. So, anyway, that was, that was basically my, my comments on it.
Well, Mr. Canooty, if I can add?
Go ahead.
The, the minutes you're referring to, I actually sat in on a City Council meeting back in the month of January when that proposal came up. In fact, I think your nomination, as well as Mrs. Davis' nomination, went before City Council, and they chose not to actually take it up on a vote until a policy was developed about how members are selected and how the existing members, meaning all nine of us, are, you know, I guess are, you know, when we expire on the board, who would be reappointed? That was the discussion, and it was quite a discussion, and I thought it was interesting, you know, and at best, I didn't want to find out about it just from the grapevine, you know, I wanted, at least if we're going to volunteer, not getting the nineteen thousand dollar a year salary like City Council members, at least take our feedback, because I'm not even sure if what we say at our planning and zoning meetings actually make it to City Council in the context and in the reality in which we, we, we really wanted to say it. And I know when I heard that they were taking up board nominations, and they were interested in changing the structure of the board, that's what prompted me to want to attend the meeting, so that's the basis of my position on, on the attrition of certain members, and I've inquired twice, and I'm not sure if we've gotten even anywhere, or not we, if staff or City Council has gotten any closer to a policy on the members and their terms on the board, but, you know, I think it's been a couple months now. I'm curious to find out what they've decided. Was it any inclusion of the comments that we made last meeting? You know, and that's why I'm, I know I'm due to my term expiring, and I've yet to complete an application for renewal, because I understand now that we need applications.
Uh, well, I think that-
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Canooty. And my, my whole thing was, we need applications, but if you were at the January meeting, that was not true, because you had some people that had letters, some people that probably sent an email, other people had filled out applications, so there was no uniformity, and I just thought that was the wildest thing that I've ever seen, that now, when there's no advertisement of any vacancies, now we have a bunch of people that's interested in applying when there's no vacancies. So that's where I, what, what my, my, you know, me wanting to know what was really going on came from.
Well, I, you know, I, I agree with you on, on most of the issues, but I think relative to the application, I thought I saw something from Mr. Gaggen in his minutes saying that for existing members, an application is redundant. But, you know, that's neither here nor there. And, but I have a question for staff. I believe City Ordinance pretty clearly outlines the whole selection process for planning and zoning and rules and regs and what, you know. So maybe we, you know, point us in the right direction so we can all read that.
I'm not familiar with that section that outlines the process. There is a section that talks about removal of board members, if there are multiple absences. In summary, the City Council has the authority to nominate any planning and zoning board members that they so choose to sit on the board. So if a term is expiring, and also, I'll just say that our previous, previous City Council member, Councilwoman and former Chair Judy Davis, is no longer on the council, so we do have a new Councilwoman, Councilwoman Miller, so I believe that because there is a new council member, we'd afford them with at least some amount of time to see if there are any individuals that she has interest in nominating herself. However, the, the process, it describes removing absentee planning and zoning board members, however, it really falls on the City Council as far as who they choose to serve on the board.
Let me, let me ask a question. So now we're allowing Ms. Miller, because what I take from it, and I've seen that meeting several times, and I go back and I reflect on just that item alone, there was no direction from City Council in January that said that every member has a selection. What I thought I understood was that the directive to staff to develop a plan or policy on how we will move forward, since the consensus, not the motion, the consensus, so basically a meeting of the minds of the members on City Council said, we need to revisit this. There was no clear directive, at least maybe I, it must have came later, but I don't think I remember a clear directive saying, um, we're going to go and have every member to have a selection. So, you know, I, I want clarity, because my position, if I can finish Jeff, is I'm not applying for reappointment until I understand what's going on in City Council, because I don't want to apply and it's mute. And in my mind, I'll take that application that I sent in three years ago and change the date, because I don't think much has changed. I'm probably doing more work and more commitment now that I'm on the board, but, you know, at best, I want to know if it's even worth my time and energy to move forward if we develop a policy, and if it's a policy, and at best, not City Council should know, the members of the board needs to know more importantly. You know, if the language is going to change on CRA land development regulations, the City Council doesn't need to know, the planning and zoning board needs to know. So that, that's what I made with it, Jeff, if you can help me out.
I have no new information at this point in time.
So are we affording Ms. Miller the opportunity to make a selection?
My understanding is, being that she is a newly appointed City Council member, just out of courtesy really, that she would have the opportunity to look into the item herself, see if there are any individuals that she knows of that wish to apply. Again, that's just courtesy to a new council member, so that's my current understanding of what the existing process is.
But where would those new members apply? To what position? To what vacancy? If there are any, because we still have holdover members.
Right, and being that there, there's a pending item for nominating board members, at this point in time, until the council acts on the item, we'll have holdover board members. However, if a council member or multiple council members so choose to either renominate existing members or potentially nominate a new member, it's really up to their discretion.
But my thought is, there was no policy developed in two months, this item should go back before City Council. They need to make a decision on whether they're going to reappoint Mr. Canooty and Mrs. Davis, because technically, and as much as I like that we have a very involved board, Mr. Canooty and Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Davis are no more voting members than Mr. Hamilton, because they haven't been reappointed, appointed, and they're technically outside of their term. And at best, Mr. Hamilton has more so of a right to serve on this board and have voting rights than they do. So I think we need clarification more than anything, and I'm not sure what our, our great city, our planning, planning and zoning board attorney, Mr. Shutt, has on it, but, you know, if members are in planning, members of planning and zoning are not legally on the board, or not on the board, and I couldn't find in the ordinances where it spoke to holdover, then, you know, how is this really even, any of the actions can go forward to City Council? If it wasn't properly vetted by members that were duly qualified and appointed according to ordinance? Now, I remind you guys, we just seen this happen in the city of Riviera Beach in the latter fall of twenty fourteen, where people weren't properly appointed to, to positions. So does it, i- is my question clear?
Uh, yes, sir. It's my understanding, and I, you know, that the city attorney's office here in Riviera Beach has looked at this, and it said the members who have been appointed in the past and whose term has expired are deemed holdover members. Now, I, I can tell you, you know, that there are, you know, certain facets of law out there, even if it's not in your ordinances, that talk about holdover terms. Uh, I have not looked at this, I'm, you know, I, I think coming from your city attorney's office, they've made the determination that those members are holdover members and that, you know, that they're a valid voting member.
Thank you. Any other members? Question? Mr. Hamilton?
And this is to the attorney. Would there be a, for lack of a better term, shouldn't have used that phrase, a term on
Um, I have not researched this, however, my, my understanding, when I looked at something like this a number of years ago, you know, it can't go on indefinitely. Uh, I think the, the things that I had seen where there was a holdover term for a period of months, where it was taking a commissioner or a board time to try to get members on that board, and I think it was looked at and said, no, that's fine, the, the members can be held over, you know, if they so choose to, to, you know, until new members are appointed or until they're reappointed, but I have not, I haven't seen a definitive timeframe, but once again, I haven't seen where something like that would go on for years.
And that's without change of their current duties? They have voting rights, etc.?
Exactly. I mean, they, they have their, you know, the same rights that they have when they were duly appointed members, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Canooty?
Something in the logic of this fails me. The item was on the agenda to be approved or disapproved in January. Ms. Miller was elected in March. Why is she being afforded a decision that should have been made before she was elected as a courtesy? And that's a rhetorical question, I have to answer. Seems to me, the decision should have been made either way in January, and when future board members come up, she'll have ample opportunity to suggest her people.
But-
Chair?
I, I will allow you, Ms. Bruce. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Since my name came up in that commission meeting, as one of the ones that they were going to freshen off the board, I am, I did ask Mr. Gaggen for an application or requested that I be reappointed. I am going to complete the application, attach a resume, my bio, and a driver's license. And I think if I've been sitting up here for, I'm not sure how many years, if the candidates that are coming in, or if someone else wants to apply, if I have to go through all that, I think that everybody better complete the application, they better submit, they should submit, I'm not saying they, but they should submit a resume and a copy of their driver's license, just to be sure that they live in the city limits. So I am going to apply, I'm going to complete them. I'm going to complete a application, a resume, a, a bio and everything, um, to ask to be reappointed. And my term, I think, is up in April. Is it May?
Perhaps May, I think it's May. Like April or May.
May. I'd have to verify.
Okay.
Well-
But, and that's not an issue for me.
According to what I've heard, it means nothing. Fill out a application.
I understand that, but I'm going to do it anyways.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, fill out the application, it means nothing, because what I've heard tonight is that new council members get a selection. When there was no, that, there was no policy that was adopted. Maybe policies are done at the city manager's office. So basically, what I left with at that meeting is, the direction is that we're going to change the board. However, there was no official action that was done. And let me tell you why I bring up these comments, because I do watch planning and zoning activity at other neighboring cities within Palm Beach County, and Wellington is very active on Palm Beach Post. I don't know why, every time I go to Palm Beach Post, they're telling, or, well, well, I think it's a good thing. They're, they're telling about some of the things that's going on in the town in Wellington. But in December, I remember when there was an article about the Chapel by the Lake project, which is downtown in West Palm Beach, and it got rejected in an appeals court because the city of West Palm Beach did not follow a procedural mandate in their ordinance of the planning and zoning board. Now, I know that there's been some things that came up in the past where, you know, it was questioned whether a per, a person was properly appointed. Does any of that, because they weren't properly appointed, does that hold any, any actions that they make, does that hold any legal authority? So I'm just curious, because we have two holdover members that's voting on items. Could it potentially come back in the future that it was improperly done and they weren't actually members? That could have some legal implications, and that's the conversation that I wanted to have. And, you know, again, it's volunteer. I don't get paid to come up here, you know, none of us do, none of the members do, at least. So I'm not filling out an application till I understand if my application is even going to be considered or am I already on the chopping block to be attrition? And that's what I meant, Ms. Ms. Brooks, as it, it doesn't make any sense to fill out an application, because if it's the direction of council, then filling out an application is moot. It's, it doesn't make any sense. So, those are my comments. Any other members?
I have a comment, but it's not on that, so if you guys, uh, when you finish, going through-
You're recognized. You're recognized, Ms. Jackson.
I just want to ask a question. When you call the vote, uh, is it a procedure that you always have to start with an alternate? I mean, can you start, um, on the other end? Uh, but it seems like, you know, we're always the first ones to be called on the vote.
Typically, uh, voting on a motion will start, start with an alternate. I understand, well, that's like just alternate voting. Historically, it could also just be up to the board's purview, so it can be changed up. You know, technically, as long as the chairperson has the last vote, that's, that's a customary have. Voting on motions occur. But we can, we can take note of the fact that maybe we should change up how the roll's called when motions are made.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Hamilton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Two points. On the State Road seven ten project at the intersection of Said Road and Congress on the northeast corner, after the improvements was made, the state, F.D.O. forgot to, um, put a bus bench back. And for a disabled person who usually, or used to, wait for a bus at that particular location. I was curious if that particular project, to that point, has been completed? Is there a way to request F.D.O. to take a look at that, features of that intersection prior to their, um, what they call improvements, and get them to replace that, um, bench at the bus stop? Point one.
The intersection was M.O.K. and Congress?
Northeast corner, correct.
Will be followed by-
Thank you. Second, I was called to vote on the first matter. I was curious why.
I think it might have been an oversight, Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, that was my mistake, and that's been noted for the voting.
Any other members, comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Colton?
The project we voted on, I think maybe last year, the corner of Australian and Blue Heron, is that still in the process of being started?
That's actually the first item on the project list that was provided tonight. There has not been building permit applied for, so it's been approved. Planning and zoning board in city council, but the developer has not come in for building permit.
Chair.
Mrs. Brooks?
I just have an announcement. Um, April is financial literacy month, and I will be doing financial literacy counseling with youth, specifically with youth, all the way from kindergarten up to teens in various locations in the county. So I'm going to start out in our great city, and I have about forty on April ninth, so I'm just letting you know I won't be here if we have that meeting that I'm going to be, um, doing a financial, uh, class without youth in the city. Everyone is invited. It is at, um, the Hilltop Missionary Baptist Church. It will be from six P.M. till eight P.M.
Mr. Hamilton?
Counsel, I'll talk to Ms. Brooks after.
Any other members? Before we move over to project updates, upcoming project and member terms. Mr. Gagnon?
Yeah, once again, the project list has been provided. I can answer any specific questions on individual projects, if the board has them.
I have a question. When were these building applications submitted?
Um, so if you look-
Is there a code?
At the left-hand side, S.P. is the abbreviation for site plan.
Okay.
Um, the first number is the actual year the application was originally submitted. So the earliest project was two thousand and ten, all the way to two thousand and fifteen. And then the second number is the project number of that year. So, for example, the, the last project, S.P. fifteen dash oh one, is the fifth project submitted in two thousand and fifteen.
The fifth project submitted, all right. Could you repeat that? I think I'm adelated.
So the abbreviation on the left-hand side, S.P. is for site plan.
Right.
The next number corresponds to the year. So if you just add twenty in front of each one, that would be the year. And then the following number is the project number that was submitted that year. So the last project would be-
Okay.
The fifth site plan submitted in, in two thousand and fifteen.
Any other comments? I'm sorry, we're on future projects. Mr. Gagnon, anything additional, upcoming?
Not at this time.
Uh, I think we've had a discussion on board member terms, if there's nothing else. Do we know what, do we know what we'll have, or potentially may have on the upcoming meetings in April? One and a possible, two and a possible?
It really depends on the active projects on the list, and both staff names generated and responses provided by applicants. So at this time, it's, it's too early to determine what project will come before the board.
And these are site plan applications, is there advert, is there a, what's the requirement for advertising? Or notice, I'm sorry, not advertising notice?
It would depend on the project itself.
Okay.
So if it, if it was, um, the typical site plan, there actually is no advertising requirement. However, we normally do, we advertise and notice the fact this is from the planning and zoning board. If it requires a special exception review, there is an advertising requirement that's associated with the project that requires a special exception.
Only for special exception? So the, the two items that we took up tonight, that being on channel eighteen, is that something that's going to be going for every single meeting? Or is that just a test to see the, the large crowd that we got to meet?
As far as placing the meeting notes on channel eighteen?
The, the items, there was a description of the, the fueling project.
Yeah, historically, I'll send a request to channel eighteen, um, and Mr. Stevens puts it on, on channel eighteen for us. So that's something that we, we customarily do. As you noted, I'm not sure how much feedback it generates, but it's at least another avenue of notifying the board.
It did good for the night, I mean, it made quite a turnout. Members hearing none, nothing else?
Chair.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hopefully, this will not occur. However, when we were at council meet, I've enjoyed you being chair.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I have enjoyed you as a chair, just in case the council does.
Well, that, you know, that, that's what my question was. So is my term up the first meeting in April, or should, seemed like the last meeting?
Right now, you're, they don't do anything, it's all right, you beat a dead horse right now.
Actually, uh-
No, my term is chair of the board, because-
Maybe the first meeting of council was April first.
Yeah, appropriate, April fools, eh?
I did not say that.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?